Thank you all so much for coming out tonight to this public hearing for the Land Use, Housing and Landmark Committee for the City of Yes Housing Opportunity. Tonight’s meeting is being recorded, it is not being livestreamed, and will be posted on YouTube in the next few days. Tonight’s hearing is one step in a long process for this text amendment. After our board votes on this amendment on the 18th of June, it will go to the Queens Borough President for a hearing and vote. Next, it will go before the City Council to review, potentially a some revision, and then a vote from the City Council. Your advocacy does not end here tonight. You can still reach out to the Borough President and your City Council member. We know some of you may have a new City Council member because of redistricting, and we will gladly work with you to locate the appropriate City Council member and provide you with the appropriate details and logistics as far as getting a hold of them. Because we know that sometimes some of these lines, you can literally be across the street and have a different Council member than your friend that you’re waving at. So we want to be able to help you make those meaningful connections. We are an advisory board. We don’t have power except to advise and try to advocate and try to provide the best advice that we can. And we do that really well when we listen to all of you. And we are thankful for how full this room is tonight. So I want to thank you all for taking time out of your evening tonight, maybe eating a later dinner, an earlier dinner, missing something important to be here. We value this tonight. I just want to say, as we start tonight, we want to ensure that we’re all on the same page, so I’m going to lay some ground rules. You don’t have to call me Mrs. Dimitriades, I’m not a school teacher. But I will say this, because we want to work efficiently tonight, and we don’t want to keep you all here late when you want to, because I’m sure you’re going to get hungry. We will not tolerate any interruptions, screaming, hissing, booing, clapping, or outbursts. We will tolerate each of you listening to each other despite the disagreements that may exist between one speaker and the next. For the committee, we’re asking you all to please refrain, wherever possible, from being on your mobile devices during public comment. We will be calling speakers in the order in which they signed up, and we will be calling two speakers at a time. And again, we’re asking this so that the committee can fully understand the concerns of each of you tonight. And we also want to be able to work efficiently so that after the public comment period, we are able to craft recommendations to our full board for our next meeting. We only have this space until 10:00 PM tonight, and we need to wrap by 9:45 PM. So we want to be as respectful of your time, and we want to be respectful of the board’s time, so that we can actually do good work tonight together. So that being said, each speaker tonight, as we’ve publicized, is only going to get two minutes, and we’re doing that because we have 35 speakers. Simple math, which I can do, is 70 minutes of public speakers tonight. And we also do that to try to hope to get a very succinct, to-the-point testimony, so that we know exactly what your concerns are, and we can figure out how we can best address them as we do our work tonight. So I’m going to call on speakers. Here’s what’s going to happen, we’re going to call two speakers at a time to the lectern, and if one of those two speakers isn’t here, we will circle them, we will come back and get them at the end. So it’s sort of like you go from the top to the bottom, and then we’ll come back to the list again at the end, because again, we don’t want to be disrespectful of people’s time who could get here on time. So I want to also introduce Keith Engel. He is our land use chair. He is going to be running the majority of this meeting tonight. I’m just taking on this little part, kind of being the heavy. I’m a mom to two 17-year-olds, I’m kind of used to being the heavy at this point of my life. So hopefully, we’ll get a lot done tonight. So Keith, I’m going to ask you to start calling the speakers, and I will be talking to her.
Absolutely, thank you Heather. And I’ll begin with everyone that’s here tonight. We’re going to start, we’re going to have the public comment session, and we’re going to start with the first two speakers, Odera Wilkins and Daniel Solau. Please, forgive me if I mispronounce anyone’s name. JP Freely?
Facing us? Because you’re addressing, just to be clear, you’re addressing the committee. And you have a microphone.
All right, so good evening, Community Board Six. Thank you for allowing me to speak again in support of City of Yes, an important consequential policy which will create wrinkles for New Yorkers today and tomorrow. As I said before, we are currently living through a severe housing shortage, where citywide vacancy rates are around 1.4%, and in Queens, it is even lower. This should be a code-red scenario prompting us all to action. However, this is a much bigger problem for those without needs, for whom the community board has a duty to protect. Some wealthier homeowners want to kill new housing from being built, but the glacial rate of new housing and the steep rise in rents are leading to increased homelessness, the exodus of skilled labor, and the future out-of-reach to many New Yorkers, which affects us all. Also problematic is our love affair with parking. The truth is, we have too many cars on our roads and not enough space for them or anything else. It gets worse. Thanks to parking minimums, new developments are held hostage to expensive parking requirements that deepen our car dependency and add many new cars to our roads, making traffic works and putting more spring on our infrastructure. These mandates easily add millions of dollars to the cost of the residential development, which can be a deal-breaker for those who want to build more housing in our community. These costs inevitably funnel down to the tenants, adding hundreds if not thousands to the already high rents we face. So I ask you tonight to do the right thing and to pass the City of Yes. This plan will add new opportunities to our community with housing and help us reduce our dependence on cars for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. JP?
Good evening, my name is JP Freely, a Forest Hills resident, opposed to the City of Yes Housing Proposal. Although the city needs more housing, the proposed changes are not the right solution. I attend to main concerns. It will have significant impact on hit infrastructure and services. The proposed change is threatened to disrupt our neighborhood character. Increased development can have significant environmental impacts. The promise of affordable housing is not often fulfilled. The proposal has not adequately involved voices of the community. Increased density can lead to overcrowding, which may have heightened safety concerns and reduced the overall quality of life. With the higher density comes a need for increased police and fire presence to maintain safety and order. However, both departments are already stretched thin. The proposal includes new as-of-right definitions, which will allow developers to bypass community board and ULR oversight for certain projects. Higher density means more residents relying on local groceries and services, potentially leading to shortages and higher prices. Finally, the method of changing the underlying definitions of the existing zoning designations is underhanded and covert. In conclusion, while I recognize the urgency for addressing our city’s housing crisis, I urge our community board and elected councilwoman to vote no on this proposal. Please see a detailed version of my public comment at tiny.cc faux hi no. That’s tiny.cc faux hi no. See a detailed version of my public comment at tiny.cc faux hi no.
Thank you. The City of Yes is...
I’m sorry, I still have 10 seconds.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, that’s done.
Thank you.
Thank you, JP. Okay, that’s up.
Jonathan Renaldi and Joe.
Anyone? Hope anyone can start. Yeah, so the City of Yes is basically, when they brought the migrants over here, let’s remember that the City Council budget was 20 to 30% to give free housing, free rent, free everything to everybody that came over here. Now, there’s a difference between Section 8 and Section 9. Section 8 is for lifelong homeownership, and that’s public housing for each and every one of us that live here that deserve these social services. Because the city is bankrupt, and because we’re going to get about 200,000 to 300,000 more migrants, the city has no place to put them. So let me crystallize this for you. The whole purpose of City of Yes is to change the zoning, so that they can take Section 8, because they just opened the Section 8. They’re going to put the migrants on Section 8, and then they want each and every one of you to put them in your basements, and put single-room occupancies, and rent out your garages, and change the makeup of the entire neighborhood, because the federal government is not helping the city. Mayor Adams and Brad Lander made the ridiculous deals with the hotels to keep, to put about $2,000 to $3,000 a night for these migrants. Now, what’s going to end up happening when they change the zoning? Have you been to Roosevelt Avenue? Because all there is is open-air prostitution, drugstores. I don’t want every single job for a young child to be to work in a weed store, and every job for a young girl to be a prostitute. Because 71st Avenue Continental, if you guys pass City of Yes, is going to be a strip club with sex and drugs, and that’s not what Forest Hills is supposed to be. And we, and you said something, that you don’t have power. You have the most amount of power. You facilitate an environment, where the community come over here and voice our concerns. The government is run from the bottom up, not the top down. Local is where we can say, “Hell no to City of Yes!” That was nice, that was.
Okay. Now, I think that’s it.
Next person up is Joe, and we’ll test the record. No, all right, so we can skip ahead to Steve Brechtman, filed by Hazel to YouTube.
Please, if we could keep it down, we want to keep moving.
My time is two minutes ten seconds. My name is Steve Brech.
You guys use the microphone for the recording.
My name is Steve Brech, I’m a native New Yorker, I’ve lived in Forest Hills for 44 years. I have an extensive background in community planning. I also am a city planner, have worked in many different cities. I address my remarks to the low-density proposal. If this proposal goes through, as-is, it will harm Forest Hills and erode the qualities that make it one of the most desirable places to live in New York. If you think it is difficult to build housing, think how difficult and how long it takes to build a community. Housing may be built by the developers, but community was built over time by homeowners who establish relationships with neighbors, develop social institutions, and invest and improve and maintain their property. And they did this because they were sure that the American dream that they had realized was protected by zoning regulations.
Can you move the microphone closer to your mouth?
Both single-family blocks of Forest Hills consist of 32 homes, typically 12 homes on each long side, and four homes on each short side of the block. Do the math, eight of the 32 homes on the short end of the block could, under this proposal, be assembled and converted to multifamily housing. That is 25%, one-quarter of the homes on every block. Every block could have several multifamily homes on each short end of the block. This is overwhelming. This changes the character, the look and feel of the neighborhood. So when the city tells us that they quote, “want to allow for the creation of a little more housing in ways that want to back the neighborhood and look and feel,” unquote, do you think they’re telling the truth? We can gain more housing, but at what cost? Sure, other cities have done this, but do we want to look like they do? Do we really want to convert garages into accessory dwelling units? This is turning the clock back 100 years. I’m almost done. Zoning is there to protect. Removing some of the protections is not a no-cost solution to the housing problem. This would not be the first time that much harm will be done in the name of doing good. Finally, at least change the wording of the plan that now says, “Sites must be on the short end of the block or facing the street 75 feet wide.” Change the “or” to “and” facing the street over 75 feet wide. Thank you.
Edward Brenman and Matthew Dragan.
I’m also here.
I’m sorry. I’m sorry. I’m sorry. Oh, Hazel, you’re here, okay. And then, we also called Edward Brenman?
No, Bren.
Bren, okay.
Bren.
And then Matthew? Matthew D. I’m going to look through your last name, I have a last name, I can go. Okay, no Matthew D., okay. So we’ll call on Hazel and then next up. Go ahead.
Good evening. I’m here today to express my support for the City of Yes Housing Proposal. When I learned about this initiative, I saw an effort to remove barriers for housing in New Yorkers, create more jobs, new jobs, and ultimately more vibrant communities. City of Yes will help someone in their areas like myself by easing their rent for the Negro significantly boosting the housing supply. It will help families save for emergencies, be less afraid of the future and a potential economic downturn. City of Yes will help someone in their 60s to build an accessory development in their backyard and rent it out. This will help them age in place while contributing to the housing supply through their backyard. City of Yes will help small businesses who may have had no choice but to shut down due to increasing rents. It will help create more vibrant communities by building mixed-use buildings with shops on the street level, increasing the supply of retail space. And finally, it will be a win for our city economy, who boosts jobs from construction, management, engineering, time to servicing. City of Yes will benefit New York in New York.
Thank you. Next one. Desmond.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ed Brenman, lifelong resident of Forest Hills. And I’m asking this board here to vote no to City of Yes. This threatens the low-density zoning of Forest Hills. Okay? This place has also been zoned for one- to family homes for many years. Okay? I don’t think we need somebody like a neighbor of mine to knock on a garage, build a two-story, three-story building to look down at my young, my high-end friends. Also, that path-down zoning proposal that would increase the density development is right, and would eliminate most, if not all, community input and approval of this proposal. It also has no provisions for improvement to the infrastructure required for the increased density infrastructure. Example, your sewers, your streets, okay? You have problems to begin with with that, all right? That’s unticked, and you’re going to have to build all that. And it’s going to create a lot of construction and a lot of problems, all right? And developers, as far as it goes for the parking, they make money. So if they want to build something along with a parking spot, people will buy it. They’re not in business for it anymore. But as far as I’m concerned, I ask this board to vote no. Thank you.
Sharon Broder and Fatima Madina.
This is my very short public comment against the City of Yes. Term discrimination frequently comes up in reference to housing. When you take away the things that hard-working people earned in the miniature quality of life, this is another form of discrimination. City of Yes discriminates against those of us who worked hard to buy a home in this city. And I’m sorry to get political, but most of our local politicians are Democrats, and this is how Democrats lose elections. Thank you.
Well, we’re equal to everyone. I too live in the Forest Hill Regal Park for many, many years, and I’m saying no to the City of Yes. As an educator, in the schools, and I taught many children around here, my concern is safety as we bring in Section 8 and re-modeling the neighborhood, I think it would be a disjustice for safety for the children. How many times I went to school, and I’m already seeing on the streets, men, women, some of them not even safe or mentally stable, and you have young children going to school. And my concern as an educator in this neighborhood is the safety of the children. So I definitely want to say no.
Next up are Rudi Winkler and Krista Treviary.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak here. City of Yes, yes, we are trying to ruin all neighborhoods. Yes, we don’t care about quality of life issues. Yes, graffiti is okay. Yes, we should all have porta-johns next to our rented garages. Yes, we should have people jumping out of the attics they live in when there’s a fire. Yes, we should have our firefighters get lost in rented basements. Yes, we should do everything to get more people to leave New York. Yes, it’s okay to operate in unlicensed scooters and uninsured. Well, I’m here to say no to all of the above. It’s about time the city listens to us. We live in our neighborhoods because they are neighborhoods. New Yorkers built our neighborhoods all across the city. There are plenty of empty office buildings that could be converted into apartments, empty storefronts all over New York. They’re empty because taxes are too high for landlords not to charge high rents. By voting for City of Yes, we lose the very reasons most of us bought our homes in the first place. Keep low-density, as low-density, there are enough locations that are high-density. Lower the cost of living in New York, and rents will come down. Building anything without parking requirements is just another way that New Yorkers are trying to control us, forcing us to get rid of cars. Well, we need them, because the trains are not as safe as they used to be. Many of us travel to work where there is no means of public transportation. Ingestion pricing that is coming is just going to shift the burdens to other parts of the city. It will make it harder for small businesses to survive, maybe convert those empty shops into living space. Please go ahead.
Hi, I just want to let you know, this is an excerpt, David Brandt from WNYC did a piece on the City of Yes, so I wrote him this email. He kindly wrote me back, so I just want to read an excerpt. “I’m a lifelong New Yorker who’s lived most of my life in Queens, with a few years in Manhattan while I was in my twenties. Therefore, I feel I have a good homeowner’s perspective on the zoning housing proposal of City of Yes. No, I’m not a zoning housing or housing expert, but my lived experience helps my future here in Queens add a perspective that those new to the area or non-homeowners may have, may not have. The double NYC piece generally portrayed Queens homeowners with the usual tropes, white elitists whose mantra is ‘not in my backyard,’ which is not a valid assessment. And to generalize all single and two-family homeowners was not wanting to help the city do their part, and were scared of change. It’s an inaccurate and unfair portrayal. Comparing Bloomberg’s rezoning of Long Island City and Brooklyn waterfront to what Adams wants to do is comparing apples to oranges. Bloomberg’s turned unused commercial area warehouses into new residential areas. My son attended ACTV High School in Long Island City. We saw the rapid construction of new apartment towers along with amazing new waterfront park there. However, what was disturbing was that all the new housing was expensive luxury rentals without significant affordable housing. No middle-class family can possibly afford to live there. I beg to differ with your Mayor Adams assertion that there is a housing crisis, rather, there is an affordable housing crisis. Just drive around all five boroughs and you see construction everywhere. However, it’s all for luxury buildings. There are thousands of new apartments, but the none are affordable. There lies the price of the issue. Mayor Adams should address the affordable housing crisis with his biggest donors, the real estate developers and construction companies, and all the other community companies. His City of Yes is quid pro quo for them and a way to refinance his next campaign. We’ve 3% single... Oh, I’m sorry, is it over?
No.
Oh, I’m sorry.
You interrupted.
We’ve 3% single and two-family owners in Queens.
One more second.
Oh, we’ll have to bear the full weight of the City of Yes and my developer buddies who continue to build unaffordable luxury apartments for absentee owners, and we’re supposed to build ADUs in my backyard to be doing my part for the city. Sorry, I say no to the City of Yes.
Next up are Jolene Sullivan, filed by Kevin Sullivan.
I’m afraid that the City of Yes wants to wipe out all low-density neighborhoods in New York without making housing more affordable. The Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation says that contrary to the Department of City Planning’s claims, housing growth has not only kept up with population growth, it’s actually exceeded it. And New York household sizes are not shrinking. They have remained steady since 1980 and are actually slightly larger than they were 40 years ago. If housing prices are rising for reasons unrelated to a simple supply versus demand relationship, increasing supply is not likely to make housing more affordable. I doubt the CD6 board members who aren’t on this committee will read the entire 1,400-page proposal. I wouldn’t be surprised if they rubber-stamp your vote. Since City Council member Lynn Schulman has the backing of powerful real estate developers, I’m guessing that she plans to support this development-friendly plan. She might use CD6’s endorsement as a sign of community support for her vote. City Council member Joanne Areola told community board by, quote, “If you vote yes with conditions, and they don’t use those conditions, you’re still a yes. And it takes your ability to vote on any other zoning after your vote here on this particular text amendment, unquote.” City Council member Robert Holden has also warned you about potential dangers of this proposal. I hope you heed their warnings. A yes vote by you can have dangerous repercussions.
Good evening.
What do you think? Go ahead.
I’m afraid that the City of Yes would needlessly destroy the characters of our quiet and great neighborhood. I think there’s a better solution to help make housing more affordable. My wife, my neighbors, and I enjoy our small gardens, we’re afraid that the lure of profit might induce some homeowners or their heirs to pay over the small gardens or ADUs or parking spaces. Some might sell their homes to the developers or turn them into multi-story buildings. The shadow noise and congestion created by those new buildings would likely diminish our quality of life. And if wealthy people use those new building units as their second home, housing will remain just as unaffordable to the average New Yorker. Those of you who live in a parking building may not appreciate what our gardens mean to us, but many of you who share our appreciation of a quiet community. Many people who live near the Forest Hills Stadium complain that the cloudy of their life has deteriorated as the noise in the concerts have increased. Some residents, including Keith Engel, correct me if I’m wrong, filed a lawsuit causing for the operators to stop holding concerts at the stadium. We’re afraid that our quality of life will likewise decrease as the number and size of the buildings around us increase. We hope that you have empathy for us, as we have empathy for you. We hope you prevent the deterioration of the quality of life by voting no for the City of Yes.
I just want to clarify that, so basically, I am oldest colleague on the board president of a co-op that fronts the West Side Tennis Club. My board filed an affidavit, my name is Aron Sondberg, board president, is an affidavit in support of the Forest Hills Guardians lawsuit. We did not file a lawsuit, so let me just clarify that for the record. Thank you. Next up are Dean Cho and Angela...
Since City Council member Lynn Schulman has the backing of powerful real estate developers, I'm guessing that she plans to support this development-friendly plan. She might use CB6's endorsement as a sign of community support for her vote. City Council member Joanne Ariola told Community Board by, quote, "If you vote yes with conditions and they don't use those conditions, you're still a yes. And it takes your ability to vote on any other zoning after your vote here on this particular text amendment," unquote. City Council member Robert Holden has also warned you about potential dangers of this proposal. I hope you heed their warnings. A yes vote by you can have dangerous repercussions.
I'm afraid that the City of Yes would needlessly destroy the characters of our quiet and great neighborhood. I think there's a better solution to help make housing more affordable. My wife, my neighbors, and I enjoy our small gardens. We're afraid that the lure of profit might induce some homeowners or their heirs to pay over the small gardens or ADUs or parking spaces. Some might sell their homes to the developers or turn them into multi-story buildings. The shadow noise and congestion created by those new buildings would likely diminish our quality of life. And if wealthy people use those new building units as their second home, housing will remain just as unaffordable to the average New Yorker. Those of you who live in a parking building may not appreciate what our gardens mean to us, but many of you who share our appreciation of a quiet community. Many people who live near the Forest Hills Stadium complain that the cloudy of their life has deteriorated as the noise and the concerts have increased. Some residents, including Keating O., correct me if I'm wrong. I have a lawsuit calling for the operators to stop holding concerts at the stadium. We're afraid that our quality of life will likewise decrease as the number and size of the buildings around us increase. We hope that you have empathy for us as we have empathy for you. We hope you prevent the deterioration of the quality of life by voting no for the City of Yes.
I just want to clarify that, so basically I am a board president of a club that fronts the West Side Tennis Club. My board filed an affidavit. My name is Anna Sonden, Board President. It's an affidavit in support of the Forest Hills Council lawsuit. We did not file a lawsuit. So let me just clarify that for the record. Thank you. Next up are Dean Cho and Angela Gage.
Good evening. My name is Dean Cho. I'm 61 years old and have lived in Forest Hills for the past 27 years. We've seen this situation before. Politicians under the guise of addressing a significant political/social issue try to jam through a broad-ranging quick fix supported by their wealthy patrons, such as building developers here, who contribute lavishly to politicians' campaign proposals. Latent shortcuts taking the grease to skids when the developers maximizing their profits with the well-being of area residents taking a backseat. The Forest Hills community is a beautiful, historic area that has existed for over 100 years. It is a burden oasis in New York City with abundant empowering trees, an extensive network of sidewalks and parks where a diverse host of residents know each other and generally feel safe. Of course, Forest Hills is not perfect. Despite its charms, it already suffers considerable traffic congestion as public schools are already overcrowded. The concerts at the Forest Hills Stadium attract enormous crowds as narrow traffic rate, noise issues, and overwhelm many of the streets. The existing commercial areas along Boston Street and Metropolitan Avenue have a serious ratting and berman problem. The City of Yes would only aggravate those issues with its proposed shortcuts for developers and the expensive residents. While the City of Yes has the supposed goal of making New York City more carbon-neutral, it contains multiple elements that would do the exact opposite. Examples include removal of environmental reviews for developers so that developers can profitably ignore the overtaxing of existing infrastructure of pipes, power lines, sewer systems, schools and roads in Forest Hills by the proposed large-scale increase in population. When the sewer lines back up and overflow, people be stuck with the problems and end up paying for fixing the problems, not the developers.
Dean, your time is up. I'm sorry. Two minutes ago, as you quit. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Angela Gage.
Good evening, Community Board. Six of Queens residents. My family and I have lived in Forest Hills for 20 years. The last 10 years have been in Van Corte. I have come here this evening to express my strong opposition to the proposed proposal by the City of Yes. Forest Hills is a historic district, so why eliminate the historic district guidelines? Most of these changes will have a horrible impact on the community of Forest Hills. Forest Hills already suffers traffic congestion on its main thoroughfares. Takes me 10 minutes to pull out my driveway because there's so much traffic when I first moved into now. Our public schools are already overcrowded. While I'm not opposed to affordable housing, I suggest building in commercial spaces. There are plenty of landlords that are suffering. Why not just give them a tax benefit? Removal of the existing infrastructure that we have, pipes, power lines, sewer systems, and roads, and the sewer system, which have already backed up. I see construction ripping up the road on Ascot to repair and replace the sewer line with the community that we have. How would we handle more-- The main point that I want to express is that I say no to the City of Yes.
Thank you. And next up are Joanne Salders, filed by Claudia Valdino.
Ready? Yep. Okay, I'm here reading under the care of Chad Callahan. He resides in Forest Hills with his family and he is the current president of the Forest Hills Board Association. The association has approximately 300 homes and is protected by architectural covenant. The City of Yes will end single-family neighborhoods like Forest Hills Van Corte. Under this plan, multifamily housing will become part of the neighborhood. Every block in the low-density area of Forest Hills could have multifamily houses on each short end of the street. The City of Yes proposal also includes accessory dwelling units, which means that garages have been converted into living quarters. Dangerous illegal basement apartments would be legalized along with the establishment of new small structures on lawns or in backyards. New York City has spent decades improving living conditions for New Yorkers and now it wants to go back 100 years and allow tiny units to be created. These concepts are beneath the living standard that any person should have to endure in this modern age and should not be allowed. We ask the board to vote no. When New York City residents want to visit Boston Street or take the express train to the city, they park in front of their homes and enjoy the safe walk down 71st Continental Avenue where they enjoy the beautiful surroundings. None of that is by accident. Our community works hard to preserve that feeling. To allow multifamily units in area zone for single-family homes is to betray the residents of the area who for decades have maintained our status as a single-family resident community. We agree with moving forward and creating pathways to progress. Repurposing older office buildings into residences and installing eco-friendly greening is to be welcomed. The fact is, there were several new office developments in this area that would jump at the opportunity to convert to residential. We welcome the opportunity to provide constructive ideas to help the city tackle the challenges we face. Our only vote, hope that our voices are heard and this proposal does not go forward in its current form. Thank you.
Next is Claudia Valdino.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Valdino and I'm president of the Forest Hills Canadian Civic Association. I was president of the department, present at the Department of City Planning presentation for CB6 and this committee. I watched on Zoom as you came up with thoughtful questions about infrastructure flooding, sewer capacity, electrical grid, and other unintended consequences, including real estate speculation tied to homes and to Metropolitan Avenue. DCP had no answers and said that unintended consequences were not their responsibility. The vast majority of mom and pops on Metropolitan, I have confirmed, do not own their buildings. The disruption near to businesses and tenants from Yes would be devastating and a man to just another form of high-rent gentrification. Current businesses would not survive. As to our homes, we are already living as tightly together as we can. Yes claims that neighborhood character would not be changed, but it has, as it states, gold increased density and urbanization of one- and two-family neighborhoods. They cannot have it both ways. We live just a driveway apart. Our infrastructure is fragile. Our cinder block foundations are fragile. Our balloon constructions, 16-foot-wide, 100-year-old homes are fragile. We already have problems with flooding. The answer needs to be a resounding no. You just want to tell all of us and you that City of Yes is bad policy, full of holes and contradictory outcomes. It is wrapped up in shiny paper and a vote claiming that it will remedy the important housing emergency. It cannot with its 15-year timeframe. Instead, release warehouse apartments and rent abandoned commercial properties for residential use immediately. Worst of all, City of Yes weighs blame for all of its problems at the feet of every one- and two-family homeowner and is tragically divisive when it's faced. This thinking is prejudicial and without merit and will never lead us to true solutions. I ask for the United's inferiority and fairly and vote no on the housing portion of the City of Yes. Thank you.
And next up are Steven Yescow and Laura Sijia Anderson.
Good evening, Community Board Six. Make no mistake about it, folks, City of Yes is Mayor Adams' quid pro quo. In exchange for funding his campaign, deep-pocketed developers like BlackRock and Carlyle Group and others will have free reign to build the types of mammoth apartment buildings that now line Queens' boulevard. Some of those buildings are built by Turkish developers, I'm told. When was the last time we heard Mayor Adams' name and Turkey mentioned in the same sentence, except around lunchtime? CB6 is tasked for doing what's right for Forest Hills, not for New York City at large. CB6 has an obligation to the citizen renters and homeowners to maintain and improve the character and quality of life in our neighborhood. Improved as one of the last preeminent residential communities in the city, CB6 must represent its constituents and vote no to the City of Yes. As residents, we have everything to gain by fighting this abhorrent policy. As elected officials, CB6 has everything to lose with the next election cycle if it continues to support-- I'd like to throw a few moments. So, you've heard from many people tonight, most of them against the City of Yes. I'd like to have a straw poll of you.
Why not?
Why not?
Why not? Okay. First of all, we're not going to yell at you. Number two, we have a process of how we do things. We listen to you first. We have not listened to everyone. Only a fool decides before they've heard everyone out. So I'm going to hear everyone out tonight. And by the way, I'm the chair of this board. I don't sit on this committee. So tonight, as chair, I'm doing a hell of a lot of listening, which is what we all need to be doing. So please, let's keep going. We have a lot of other people to hear from tonight. And if one more person yells and bullies at me, we'll be asking you to leave because we have people waiting outside who cannot come in right now, who are actually here to give testimony tonight. So please, we're not going to take the foolishness because we're literally keeping people outside who want to be inside. So being inside, no, this isn't a time for questions. If you wanted to make a comment, you could have signed up in advance. We've pushed information out for weeks. There's no excuse for not having signed up at this point. Okay, go ahead. What's yours?
Good evening, Community Board. My name is Laura Sijia Anderson. I have lived in Forest Hills all of my life. My husband's a German teenager. I have no reason to show this to you. After reading the City of Yes proposal, I feel strongly that our city and community just do not have the infrastructure to support this proposal. I am greatly concerned about how this proposal in the past would negatively impact our water, sewer, electric, gas, and transportation capabilities. I am also concerned about how this will affect response to police and fire. I have not read any proposal regarding how the increased infrastructure needs and refinements have met. It seems like we live in a low-density area. However, my detached house is literally eight feet from my neighbor's house. I respectfully urge this committee and our City Councilwoman to vote no on the City of Yes.
Next up is Steve Albonado and Casey Martinez.
Hello, my name is Steve Albonado. I've lived in Forest Hills now for 24 years. While growing up, I briefly lived in public housing and living in my grandmother's one-room studio because my mother and I couldn't qualify as a public house because everything is run so poorly. So the waiting was like they just opened up the section 8 for the first time in 15 years. That basically means that the city does a very piss poor job of managing the cash. From what I understand, they're doing a lot of repairs at our expense, taxpayer's expense, so most of the housing projects, plumbing and mechanical rooms. And then the understanding I have is that they are then going to sell a lot of these. If you go into the story, you'll see Queensbridge and Story Housing, some of the worst housing projects in New York. But you're going to wind up selling them for real estate developers and with all kinds of tax benefits. So then we're going to pay the repairs, make it saleable to them, and then what's going to happen to the people that are living in there when they convert them? Okay, as we keep saying, every time they say they're going to have affordable housing, by the time they actually build it, there isn't affordable housing, toilet running and stuff. And I'm in the construction business, so I see what's going on. I see all the time. As far as where to put people, you've got some options. And really, not kidding, you have public golf courts. You're very unutilized. You've got all that land. Why not build housing there? That's a lot of real estate and it's not going to hurt any of the homeowners anymore. Right now, the commercial vacancy rate in New York City is 20%. And it's not going to get any better because a lot of people are working from home. So aside from the fact that everything that is overtaxed, as everybody seems to be saying, that your infrastructure is overtaxed. I get water in my house in the basement all the time. I've had two major floods. And if you put that many more people, it's going to exacerbate all the infrastructure problem. So find a better place to do it. Do it. I think it's pretty obvious that everybody here doesn't want any part of this. I would say 95% of the people here, it appears to me, don't want any part of this. It'd be nice if you voted for it.
Steve, that's done. But Steve, can I ask you a quick question about the flood guys? Come on, this is important. I want to hear about this. Can you give me the specific street you live on? Because this is a separate thing, but we've been talking about flooding. It's a point about a really big storm season.
I live on 68th and Loop.
68th and what?
Loop.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate that insight. Not at that. Contact them, though. Appreciate it greatly.
Casey, hold on.
It's on. Ten minutes. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in my support of the City of Yes. And I want to bring up a point why I support it, but separately, well, you have heard. I've lived in this neighborhood for 21 years and my in-laws moved here in 1971. So I have children, three generations. My husband is one of four kids and we're the only ones who could afford to buy something to live in once we had our first child in this neighborhood. And the others, they decided to move to Long Island. They wanted to move to Long Island, but these were the options. They would have loved to have lived just where we are, just a few blocks away from the in-laws. And my father, when he became very sick, I could not find him something we could afford within walking distance because everything for rent are big apartments that were meant for families. There are no options. The flip side of that is when my husband's grandmother was alive in the 80s, they could find something for her because the rules were not so tight. And they found a garden apartment for her that now would be considered illegal. Another point could be that there are people that, once they retire, sometimes our greatest wealth is our homes. And either we leave and we go someplace else and then we're disconnected from the community that we have been a part of our whole life. But we have options. We have options to find a way to keep what we've worked for and yet to still have a good home and good environment.
Casey. Next up are Doreen Lynn Saunders and John Feltman.
John Feltman? John Feltman? Okay. Then we'll call Dunkway then? I think Dunkway might be outside. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Doreen Lynn Saunders. I have lived across the street at Park Plaza for 44, 45 years now. My concern is this. Some of my information, I just had information, Bornado owns the property on the other side of Rico Center Mall, Junction Boulevard, between 62nd Drive and Harvest Harding. It's all boarded up. They're getting ready to develop. I also have spoken to members on community-- I also have spoken to members on Community Board Six as well as another office I can't remember at this moment. Oh, Senator Ramos's office. And it's my understanding that they have as a right to build 32 stories up. That would not only create severe quality of life issues for everyone living back there who sees towards the city and has an open sky view with sunsets that can be so gorgeous. I take photos and send them to my brother in England just so he can get jealous. And he is jealous. They are gorgeous. Not only will it destroy sunsets, fireworks, birds, open air sensor feeling, that's a quality of life issue. And it will reduce the property values of our apartments and any apartment building on this side that faces the city. It will reduce property values. We have 1,200 to 1,500 people living in our building, or 450 apartments. There's a lot more back there. And this is just not a feasible solution to allow a 32-foot story. The Alexandria is bad enough. That's 22 stories. That's too high. There should be nothing above 15 stories in this area. And we cannot turn this into an industrial slum by overpopulating and destroying the residential quality of what this neighborhood is all around this area, Rico Park and Forest Hills. Now, I personally, I've heard it today or what I've read online, I am not for City of Yes. I think if there's development that needs to be done, don't do it by crowding out the neighborhoods that are already here and overcrowded. Develop someplace where nothing exists. I hear Willet's Point is available.
Next up is, um, Sam Haisen.
Wait, hi.
The board, you're welcome. You'll have two minutes.
Okay. Hi, here at CB6. My name is Donghui. I live in the Forest Hill area for 22 years. I raise my two children. I love this area. I don't want our neighborhood to be destroyed. So I strongly oppose the City of Yes plan. So it was proposed not from a serious scientific approach. It was just proposed very arbitrarily by the mayor. So I'm glad today that we can have this hearing so that we can have our voice being heard by the mayor. I understood, you know, the need for the city to grow, for the population to come in to strengthen our city. But that should be done by serious, by scientific research and to decide where is good to demand more high-rise building, more multifamily building. And the neighborhood, Forest Hill, Rico Park, we have many communities. We have many lovely communities. It has been done. It has been created. It has been formed to today's landscape from generations of people's effort. So we should respect people's opinion. We should respect to the community voice. And we should seriously, you know, research what's the best for our community and for our city in the balance of both development and also, you know, we want to respect the present, the beautifulness of each lovely neighborhood. So I think by doing some hard work, we can reach that balance instead of just arbitrarily saying, okay, the city can build high-rise buildings, can build stuff everywhere. That's not right. That's wrong. I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up are Jocelyn Loidowski and Anna Marie Prono.
Thank you, CB6, for the opportunity to speak at this public hearing. My name is Joanne Loidowski and I'm a lifelong resident of the community with my children being third-generation community members. CB6 and the entire city council needs to collectively vote "no" on the City of Yes proposal. There have been no studies published on the impact on infrastructure of this proposed allowable construction in all areas of New York City. What does a little construction mean in each neighborhood as the City Planning Committee for Queens presented on May 6 and 13? No data, very superfluous slideshow. There has been little consideration given to the effects of increased density on our sewers, water, gas, electric, parking, and our school seats. Our transit system is not safe. And that should be addressed first and foremost before stating we do not need cars to park. This proposal was put out extremely fast with little engagement of New York City residents. Perhaps this was intentional so the developers could have their land grabbed. One scenario, a family raising children in an arched-fourth zone, living in an attached-one-family house, and sees the attached house sold to a developer who will most likely be an absentee landlord. Construction ensues for three, four families with foundation work being done to bring a basement apartment up to code. How will that affect a shared foundation? And how will it affect the architecture of our community? A house, a big box. A house, a big box. I've seen it in Seattle. I've seen it in Yonkers. We don't want to see that here. Now, you will have strangers next door, in and out, possibly looking at your children in the wrong way as they play in their once-safe backyard.
Joanne, I'm sorry, but that is time. I gave you a couple extra there. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm really trying to communicate to her. I got to tell her, you didn't get to finish. So if you could please send us the rest of it via writing so we can have it for the board, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna Marie Prono. I'm a licensed architect with 30 years of construction experience. I attended a community board meeting and watched the Zoom session where city planning failed to demonstrate a realistic and responsible infrastructure expansion to support more housing. Additional dwelling units, ADUs, basement apartments. Flooding in basements was discussed, but there was no resolution as to how to fix it. More importantly, most basements have only one means of egress. And for fire safety, two means of egress is required. Again, no solution was offered. Attic apartments, you need to build a third floor. Most homes can't structurally support this. Again, two means of egress is required and no solution was offered. And converting garages into apartments has its own set of unsolved issues. Many relying on existing infrastructure. Burdens to the existing infrastructure. The electric grid. Con Edison's reliable, clean city project claims to add 900 megawatts of transmission capacity across the city. This is for electric vehicle charging stations and replacing existing fossil fuel systems in existing buildings. This is not about providing clean energy to new homes. Sewer and stormwater. We haven't been told how more housing impacts this. More buildings and paved areas mean that water won't be absorbed into the ground and go into the combined sewer, overtaxing the current at-capacity wastewater treatment plants. Transportation was not discussed in terms of providing expansion and improvement of our existing subway or bus system. Without such, we'll have more overcrowding and unsafe travel. Some lines are at capacity during rush hour and they cannot handle increased ridership. In neighborhood context, the architectural language of the proposed housing units was not discussed. Will our quaint neighborhoods turn into a haphazard collection of structures? In closing, I urge the community board members to vote "no" on the City of Yes.
Our next up is David Rumpf and, by the way, Cheryl Fenn.
David Rumpf, it appears I owe you an apology. You did sign up, so.
I did.
I apologize for slapping that in your direction.
Apology accepted. I just hope that after everyone speaks that all you guys are on the mic and tell us what you are, you for it or against?
Well, you'll have to stick around for a few hours.
I will.
How long we work.
I'll stick around until 2:00 in the morning.
There we go.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a ridiculous plan by a ridiculous mayor. Mayor Adams could care less about affordable housing. Long Island City and the rest are not affordable housing. And the mayor is running around the city every single night lining his pockets, getting wine dined and pocket lined. Let's call it like it is. I'm a Forest Hills resident. I'm 60 years old. 60 years I've lived in this neighborhood. There is no other neighborhood in all of New York like Forest Hills. The architectural mammoth that was birthed by craftsmen. Do you know what you will do, each and every one of you, if you vote for this? You will destroy the predominant, beautiful neighborhood of Forest Hills. I went to Forest Hills. I went to Kefar's School where Donald Trump, my felon president, went. And I'm going to tell you this. Take a look at what they did to the land on Austin and Union Trump, like, and they're building housing. That is not affordable housing, by the way. It's going to be thousands of dollars. Nobody is against affordable housing. But build affordable housing, not thousands and thousands of dollars. Like the gentleman said here, all of these houses flood. I live on 75th Road between Austin and Queens Boulevard. And they flood every single. You're going to put people in our backyard. You're going to have garages turned into... It's ridiculous. Ridiculous. And ladies and gentlemen, elections have consequences. Every single one of our elected officials that vote for this, vote their asses out next election. Vote them out. And if we didn't have the migrant situation, we didn't have the migrant turning all the money and all the citizens of dollars, we wouldn't have money for affordable housing. Okay? I urge each and every one of you to be transparent in your vote and to vote against the City of Yes. The City of Yes is insanity.
Okay, so Cheryl comes forward. Cheryl, come on up. Get yourself comfortable. Just so you understand, the work of this board is extremely transparent. We can give you voting sheets for as far back as you want to. First of all, we've got a hell of a kick-ass administration in our office. So everything we do, we're all on the record, like it or not. And the only time, and just so you guys know, we're very clear on conflict of interest. The only time that you can claim that you can't vote for conflict of interest is if it benefits you financially. So understand, we will all be on the record. We will all be on the record. I won't be voting tonight because I'm not on this committee. I will be voting on the 18th, so you can call me out then. But just so you understand, everything we do is fully transparent. You can read, manage every single meeting. You can watch all the meetings that we've been recording on YouTube since 2020. So just understand, we're transparent. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Cheryl. Sorry.
My name is Cheryl Hetic. I'm a lifelong New Yorker and resident of Rico Park and a homeowner. Say "no" to the City of Yes. We must include and respect the real needs of New Yorkers in our plans to continue to have a thriving and livable set of communities in our city. We live in a rapidly changing world and new challenges are before us. We must be seeking our own vision for what we want our future to be as New Yorkers and find solutions to make our own vision become reality and not seek to fit into the goals and visions set by international bodies and others not accountable to us. As new pilots in New York are established, we must gather more information from each neighborhood as to how that neighborhood will be affected. This should not be about overall blanket policies from above, but about how each of us as citizens and residents is affected. Zoning and infrastructure. It may be helpful to loosen up some zoning requirements, but people move into residential neighborhoods and invest in their homes so they can raise their families and live in safe neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Changing zoning requirements under the City of Yes may make it harder for families and small businesses to function. I believe that other than for small changes, zoning variances and other restrictions should remain in place. For any greater changes, we should require local input and permission. I live in a 100-year-old house with new pipes that were installed a few years ago for new construction in the neighborhood. Pipes broke in my home, flooding my whole basement. There was also an unrelated fire in the Con Ed electric connection to my home. Our old infrastructure may not be able to take the strains of changes and major changes in construction. Environmental concerns. As a citizen and homeowner, I've acted in a way to be very environmentally responsible. An underlying assumption of the City of Yes is that we should use greater use of electricity.
Cheryl.
There may be a problem with that. We need redundancy. And I will include the rest of the statements that I used.
Please, thank you so much.
Our next up are Claire Quaintance and Jonathan Howard.
Jonathan Howard. Jonathan, we have Michael N. Michael N. Neymar, Neymar, Neymar. Okay, then, I'm just trying to queue the next person. Odette Wilkins? Okay, go ahead. We'll figure this out. Figure out what happened to our same people. All right, am I on? Yes, okay.
Hi, my name is Claire Quaintance. I'm a resident of Forest Hills and I'd like to voice my opposition to parts of the City of Yes plan being proposed here tonight. I've been in New York City for almost 18 years. First in an apartment in Washington Heights, then in an apartment on Queens Boulevard, and now in a single-family home near Metropolitan. My husband and I understand and appreciate how neighborhoods that make of Forest Hills are all different. Several proposals being voted on here tonight seek a one-size-fits-all approach and are incompatible with the way our neighborhood works. The rent is too high. People cannot afford to live where they want. And upzoning our neighborhood would simply take what is currently a majority-owned owner's space and turn it into a real estate tycoon's playground. A developer would simply buy, share more houses, tear them down, and combine their lots into market-rate apartments. Apartments whose rents would be more than most of the people in this room, myself included, and people in these houses could currently afford. Having seen the rapid development in areas like Long Island City, I haven't seen housing affordability increase. I've just seen residents priced out of their communities as vacant luxury apartments crowd out the sky. The addition of ADUs in the backyard would remove green space just as climate change is reaching a point of no return. Our basements and roads flood during heavy rain. Our sewers are over 100 years old. No environmental study has been done on how this would actually impact our neighborhoods. The removal of parking space requirements for new buildings would not in any way disincentivize people from actually owning cars. It would only move that cost off the balance sheets of developers and onto the community. I asked a City of Yes representative where people who moved these buildings to the park, and she said that some developers might still choose to install spots, so she didn't think it would be an issue. To be blunt, I do not trust capitalism to regulate itself. I also don't trust the city to actually add the services to properly police and support these initiatives. This seems entirely like a kickback to rich developers who are the power behind the Adams office, clothed in a claim of progress. I urge the board not to call.
Okay. I'm trying to find, guys, I'm trying to find some of the speakers because now we're going to rotate through. We tried for Jonathan Howard. Jonathan, are you here? Okay, come back. Michael N. Neymar, Neymar. No, okay. We tried for Odette Wilkins. So Odette, you're done. Next is Jay Eam. Is that my name? Can you correct me? Jay, last name is?
Um.
Um, like when you're trying to calm down. That's a good thing. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to give you two minutes, starting now.
My name is Jay. I'm a resident of the City of Yes. I'm on New York City Council. I've been on the corner of 112th Street. Sorry, can you hear me? Yeah, I live on the corner of 112th Street[1778.14]